Ready to debate. That's everything off the printer.
Five minutes.
I'd like to call the Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Lee County zoning board of appeals to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Eric.
Here.
Eric.
Here. Thank you. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is approval of the previous minutes from Thursday, December second, twenty twenty-one.
So.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business, but we have new business. Petition number twenty-one dash P dash fifteen eighty-five, petitioner is Gerald M. Zellhopper. Terminal number thirteen dash twenty-one dash zero one dash one oh one dash zero zero five in May Township. The petitioner is requesting a special use for the purpose of a planned unit development.
Um, Mr. Chair, before we get into any of the details, I'd like to request that uh, we make it known upfront and enforce our usual time limit. Um, looking at this, it could be an extensive um, presentation. And quite honestly, with some of the material, there appears to be some material missing and yet to be received by Mr. Zellhopper, whether it's here tonight or not, I don't know. But um, I think we're going to require some time to evaluate some of the information and also to do some in-depth on defining the facts. So I would like to keep it at our um, two and a half hour limit. And then look at continuing if necessary to a later date.
Okay. When we get to that point in the meeting, I'll let you make a motion for that.
Okay, I just, I wanted to get that upfront because the last time we had a, we had a meeting that started running over, we turned into a four-hour.
Yeah, I remember. What's that?
Thank you, my little summary.
Yes, if you'd like to give your summary first.
Notification of petition twenty-one P fifteen eighty-five was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners posted at the property. And the zoning board agenda for this petition was displayed on the Lee County website. A legal notification for this petition was published in the Dixon newspaper on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Required collection of certified mailing receipts and newspaper invoices have been submitted for the record. In addition to other notification requirements, any township in Lee County that has an established plan, planning commission must be notified of a pending petition and may make a recommendation on that petition. This petition, twenty-one P fifteen eighty-five involves both Amboy and May Townships, which do not have an established planning commission. In the Lee County comprehensive plan, the future land use concept plan for the area around the petitioner's property on Winding Road shows growth and development aimed toward agricultural and special recreation. The current activity on these parcels are not consistent with the Lee County land use plan. The petitioner is working with sanitation, sanitationist, sanitarian, Jennifer Cole with the Lee County Health Department, defining the well and septic system meets all state and local health code requirements. The Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District has created a natural resource information report that has been submitted to the file. Um, the executive summaries in your packet. Dave Anderson, the Lee County engineer and supervisor of the Lee County Highway Department will review the stormwater management report when it is submitted. And the petitioner has submitted a development plan for the planned unit development, and that is included in your packet.
You ready?
So I can explain some of the handouts that you've received. I have again included the development plan put together by Mr. Zellhopper, and in a moment here, I'll have him go through that plan with you. I did include some of the, the basic information, so a copy of the petition and all the notices that went out and the form notice that went out to the adjacent landowners. And then you'll see the other documents that I handed out to you um, is a letter from the Lee County Sheriff relating to traffic issues at that location in relation to the business. And then you'll also see a letter of support from the neighbors surrounding seventeen forty-nine Winding Road and that and seventeen sixty Winding Road. And then lastly, in the packet, you'll see an email um, where Mr. Zellhopper is engaged with Willett Hoffman. I will note, um, as Mr. Hughes pointed out, we are in the process of obtaining a site plan. Uh, we were notified mid-December by D that the stormwater management plan and site plan couldn't be performed by the county engineer like we had thought. And let me back up a little bit. In October and November, I met with D to go over the development plan requirements. We kind of divvied the responsibilities for that development plan. We thought, or we were under the impression that county engineer put together some of those items. Uh, but like I said, in mid-December, D indicated to us that that was not possible, so we have engaged with Willett Hoffman to get those items to you as quickly as we can. But Jared, if you don't mind, I'll have you start walking through the development plan with them and explaining some of the maps.
I think we should have him sworn in, Bruce.
I will.
Okay.
Sign two.
You state your name for the record.
Jared M. Zellhopper.
Where do you currently reside, Jared?
I reside at uh, five sixty-two Dry Gulch Road, Amboy.
And do you operate a business out of seventeen forty-nine Winding Road in Amboy, Illinois?
That is correct.
And what business is that?
That is, uh, Z Best Enterprises.
And are you familiar with the petition for special use for planned unit development that was filed in this matter?
Uh, yes, I am.
Did you review that petition?
Yes, I did.
And was?
Oh.
Courtney, you're not too bad, but Jared.
Okay. So was this petition filed at your, at your direction?
That is correct.
And are you familiar with what a planned unit development is?
Uh, yes, I am, and, and some other requirements, um, such as minimum of the, the ten acres. And then there's a, a laundry list of, of items that, that have to be um, met in order to qualify for the P U D.
So the minimum ten acre requirement, do you meet that requirement?
So currently, we own four point six six on the south side of the road, which is seventeen forty-nine. And we have another five point five acres on the north side, uh, under purchase contract.
And those that?
Then that equals ten point one six acres.
And this development plan that I've handed out, did you put that together?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, can you go through each of the requirements for a development plan and then note where on the map those items are?
Certainly. So letter A is general development plan that covers all the land to be included in the P U D with a total amount of development to occur, basically a brief statement about that. So you'll turn to our
Is appendix A one of the development plan encompass the total amount of acreage to be included in this P U D?
That's correct. A one is, is both parcels included outlined in blue. Blueish-black.
And I have this displayed on Thank you.
And so looking specifically at A one, you've noted um, the truck parking and the lumber building and equipment. Do you have any future development plans for this open area that's north of Winding Road?
No, currently, there's no plans to do any expansion. The only reason to have to purchase that is in order to tie the two properties together and exceed the ten point oh acres.
And if, if the county board and the CBA, the CBA recommends this P U D and the county board approves it, would that cure both zoning violations at seventeen forty-nine and seventeen sixty?
To my understanding, yes, because they, we, we would exceed the ten acres and both parcels have to uh, touch each other. They cannot be disconnected.
Now, looking at appendix B one, what did you identify on this?
So appendix B one deals with seventeen forty-nine, south side of the road, currently which I own, four point six six acres. It shows the existing buildings. It shows the parking area, the truck loading zones, the material yards, customer parking, uh, and then truck and trailer storage as well.
And this is all the current use of the property, is that correct?
That's correct. That's uh, basically how it looks with the exception of the satellite. Photo is a little bit old and it's showing some buildings in the bottom left corner, which are not there, and I drew in a representation of a building that, that is there.
And moving along to appendix B two, what did you depict there?
So B two is doing the entire parcel, but, but focusing on the north side of the road, which is the seventeen sixty, the one under contract, uh, showing the existing building, which is a lumber storage building. It also stores equipment. We're noting where the trailer storage would be and the truck parking as well. For seventeen sixty.
Moving along to C one, what is shown there?
C one goes back to seventeen forty-nine and shows the current private well and the upgraded septic system. Private, private septic system.
I also note that you depicted where proposed signage would go.
And that is correct. There's, uh, there is no current signs, but uh, we plan on putting approximately a four by eight sign at uh, one of the main entrances.
Moving along to C two, what can you, what if anything, can you tell us about this depiction?
C two, um, same thing for seventeen sixty. There's no signs, but it's showing the uh, semi-impervious surfaces represented in the gray, such as, you know, the gravel area, not, not green skapes. And the entrance.
What if anything, can you tell us about appendix D one?
The D one deals with the drainage. Um, if you'll notice, for seventeen forty-nine, I've basically outlined the entire property with a, what I would call a very reasonably accurate representation of the water direction flow indicated by the blue arrows and then the uh, approximate topography of the property. Now, we have, if you look to the left-hand side of the page, um, several years ago, we put in a retaining wall, two catch basins indicated in blue, two independent tile lines indicated in blue. Going down the hill, you can't tell, but that's a very steep, highly erodible hill. And into a retention basin in the edge of the woods, out of the uh, productive ground. We did this on our own accord years ago to, to help with any erosion um, in the watershed that we have on the top of the hill.
And what if anything, can you tell me about appendix D two?
D two is a similar drawing, deals with the drainage. Um, that's a, of course, I haven't owned that, but I have a pretty good lay of the land and you can see that there's a a waterway in trees on the very top of the page. Basically, all of this land and this water flow flows right into that group of trees, continues on down into the rest of the farm. Exception.
Excuse me, just a clarification. Is uh, north at the top of the map?
Um, so that road runs a little screwy, but for, for purposes tonight, I would call that about as north as we're going to get.
And the other thing, to the right of the lower part is that house and stuff that's not in the diagram.
Uh, that, that property doesn't belong to me. That's seventeen fifty, you talk all the way on the right-hand side of the, yeah. That property doesn't belong to me. That's seventeen fifty-five Winding Road. That's uh, an acre. My property is, uh, cuts right through there.
And the piece that you purchased, which one's that?
That's everything on what we're calling the north side of the road. That's uh, under purchase contract, which would be the seventeen sixty where the, now, I, I own the red building, but I don't own the land. I, I currently lease the land that it's on. Um, but that, the north side of the road makes up the five and a half acres, which would put me over ten acres. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the acreage to the north of the road, you are under contract to purchase?
That is correct.
And is that contingent upon zoning?
That is, the only contingency is if, if the zoning is approved.
And, and the adjacent neighbor, let's say to the right of the property of seventeen forty-nine Winding Road, I believe the, the Merlack family lives there?
That's correct, Jeff and
What?
Jeff and Mary.
And did Jeffrey sign this letter of neighborhood support for the P U D petition?
Yes, they both did.
Okay. Okay, so moving back to D two, if you want to continue explaining.
Um, so on D two, if you look at where the building is, most of the water heads to the north, to the waterway I was just describing. Um, part of the water heads out to the roadway and down, there's not really a ditch there, but it's uh, the, the roadway. And then part of it heads uh, kind of more to the east into the uh, into the woods.
And moving to appendix E, what if anything, can you tell me about what's depicted on this map?
Okay, so appendix E deals with elevations. So we took approximately, I believe it's seven shots. If you'll look at, starting at the top of the page where it says road, uh, it says eight hundred seventy-one feet. I believe that would be above sea level. I believe it's what that's referring to. It was a uh, a satellite, you know, a GPS on a phone app. So we took a couple shots along the road to get a baseline of the road. And then I took the top of concrete grade in each building. So if you look at the front building is eight seventy-four. If you move just below that, it's eight seventy-three. If you move to the left of that, it shows, I don't know if you can read that, but it's eight hundred and sixty-nine feet. And then the container building is also eight hundred sixty-nine feet below that. Then I took two shots, one of each catch, catch basin, which one is eight hundred and sixty-six, one is eight hundred and sixty-five feet.
Moving along to appendix F, what if anything, can you tell me about what's depicted on this map?
So appendix F is the approximate square footage of each of these. Uh, this, this was a map that, that D had provided early, early on, showing different um, sections of the building. Obviously, this thing has been added on to a, a lot of times over the years, and that represents a square footage of each of the squares and rectangles.
And then looking at appendix G, this email deals with correspondence from D Duffy relating to the driveway access permits instead of a traffic study. And just to explain briefly, uh, one of the requirements for the development plan was that a traffic study be conducted. What's unusual about this is, is you would usually have that when a development is proposed. Obviously, this is already built, so um, though I don't want to speak on behalf of D, it's my understanding that D coordinated with the county engineer and they both determined that a traffic study was not necessary. However, um, they directed Mr. Zellhopper to, to obtain driveway access permit. So this is the email from D to Jared advising him to do that. Uh, Mr. Zellhopper, have you applied for those driveway access permits?
That's to them, okay. Uh, yeah, as a matter of fact, I, I had both the road commissioners come out. Besides their approval letter, I filled out uh, the permits for review. Both of them are, are very familiar with the properties, um, and both of them signed off that the current driveways um, meet specifications and the locations are fine. No uh, no alterations would have to be made.
And you've brought copies of those here tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Moving along to appendix H, it appears that you've reached out to the township road commissioners, is that correct?
That's correct. This was the initial letter in regards to checking the box for dealing with the two road commissioners. This, this letter was before the uh, the permit was required and, and both of them uh, also signed off on that as well.
And have you reached out to the Amboy Fire Department?
Uh, that's correct. Um, I reached out to the chief and the assistant chief. And uh, both of them came out approximately a week ago and did a uh, initial site survey, asked a lot of questions about what was stored in the buildings, especially across the street where we, where we kept the lumber, what the um, what materials were in, in the main building. And basically said they didn't really have any concerns, especially since we have our flammable, and what they, I remember what they called it, but the lumber is a particular class of material, highly, highly flammable. And it was isolated from everything else in a separate building, so they were um, said they didn't really see too much of a problem with that. That would be in the, the red building on the north side of the road.
And did you receive a letter from the Amboy Fire Department in relation to this petition for P U D?
That's correct. And letters included in the packet and basically the extent of it is that uh, there's no adverse effect for them. They currently have been serving our area. And there was nothing, um, no noted features related to this development that would compromise the safety to the public. If change of use occurs, it would be unknown what that effect would be at that time. We also discussed, you know, the mitigation of the, the grasses behind, which now that we've bought additional acres behind, there's more gravel buffer uh, from the uh, CRP grasses that were very close to our shop before. Now they're not very close at all.
One of the requirements for the development plan was that you obtain a preliminary impact report from the school districts impacted. Um, did you include a letter from the Amboy Community School District as appendix J to this packet?
Uh, that is correct. I reached out to Joshua Nichols, the superintendent of the schools. Um, took him a little while. I think he discussed it possibly with the board and came back with a letter saying that um, they were certainly in support of it, especially since I've employed several kids from the school district. I've donated to countless school programs and sporting organizations, and so they were uh, um, certainly had no objection.
To recap briefly, what, what type of business is Z Best Enterprises Incorporated engaged in?
Uh, primarily, we deal with, you know, manufacturing of building components, roofing, siding, materials, ag predominantly, but also residential as well.
And so if your petition for P U D is allowed, is it your intent to continue to operate Z Best Enterprises out of that location? Or let me back up, the location described in your petition?
That's, that's correct. That's uh,
And do you have any, any plans to grow or expand your business at that location?
No. Now, currently, there's no, there's no plans to develop it any larger.
And do you understand that if this petition for P U D is granted, that you're going to be restricted to using that property as you stated in your petition?
Uh, yeah.
And there were other items that I have passed out. Did you put together this letter of neighborhood support for the Z Best P U D petition?
Yes, I did. I know that uh, there seemed to be some concern that we were hearing in regards to uh, traffic, safety, road conditions, things of that nature. So the best way for me to address that was to go directly to the neighbors and, and get their input. And I will add that um, nobody refused to sign the support letter.
And did you also have the occasion to reach out to the Lee County Sheriff regarding your petition?
Yes, also in conjunction with that support letter, I wanted to, to have the uh, sheriff's department go back in the twenty-three year history because I wanted to make sure my memory was correct. And that there was no traffic, safety, any kind of issues in relation to Z Best business operations at that location. That's the letter that the Lee County Sheriff provided.
And then lastly, we've provided an email thread, um, looks like from a Jeffrey Smith, is that correct?
That's correct. Jeffrey Smith is one of the engineers at Willett Hoffman. Uh, I had reached out to Willett Hoffman before, but unfortunately, my normal contact apparently doesn't work there any longer sometime after around Christmas. Uh, Jeffrey Smith and I had a conversation a few days ago. I sent him basically all the same information I just provided to you, along with the email uh, that you had forwarded from D Duffy in relation to uh, kind of our plan. Yeah. He got back with me this morning and basically, I'll read you, it's very short email. Well, what Mr. Smith says is Jared per our conversation, here's what I see after reviewing the information you have sent to me as they pertain to engineering issues. So it says, number one, the packet included a list of engineering issues to be added, A through I, nine items. A was the traffic study, which was, the engineering was not required, and I've already taken care of the access permits. They've been applied. He didn't know that they have actually been completed now. Uh, B was the lease report, which has also been submitted, and we have a, a hard copy tonight as well. The well and septic, uh, Jennifer Cole and I have had multiple communications in regards to that. And as a matter of fact, uh, approximately ten years ago, I think it was two thousand and ten, she had come out and Uh approximately ten years ago, I think it was two thousand and ten, she had come out and. We had to upgrade the septic field at that point because of having the house plus a business there. So um so we 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 made it two hundred feet longer, excuse me, larger. Than what it was in compliance with what Jennifer asked for at that time. Uh item D, the stormwater. So there is an existing system. Z Best will need to hire a firm to review the existing system and. Verify that it is currently in working and maintained condition, which I can confirm that because we've been in use for several years. We also need to check to see if it meets the county drainage ordinance. If it does not, recommend design modification to meet that ordinance. E is the impact on the township road. We've taken care of that with the township commissioners already. Impact to the fire protecting district. We've also handled that from the Amboy Fire Department. Impact to the school district. That's been handled with superintendent. Uh impact to nearby municipality that I believe is not applicable because we're not within one and a half miles of a municipality. And hearing for townships, neither township has a planning commission. Uh item two, he mentioned something about needing to perform some top uh topographic survey. To verify grading. I believe he's referring to my maps that I drew in where where the arrows and the retention bond and. And that is.
So to me, it seems like the only outstanding items that you have are to coordinate with. Um the Lee County Health Department regarding the well and septic. To have an engineer perform a stormwater management plan for you, or at least verify that it meets county ordinance and. To get the site plan put together that will also have the survey to verify the great the grading and drainage issues. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that that's correct. Jeff Jeffrey Smith said the main, the only real main thing that he saw was basically verifying the. The drainage, uh the stormwater management plan. That that's kind of the the utmost outstanding one that he sees. That's kind of in conjunction with the topographic.
Do you foresee uh traffic conditions to increase if your petition for PUD gets approved?
No, I I also asked all the neighbors about this and and you know, this this is not theoretical, it's existing. So what it is is what it's gonna be. I'm not saying there may not be busier times or slower times, but to be honest. Of all of the neighbors I talked to, most of them complained more about the Woodhaven traffic than they ever would about the traffic coming in to and from my business.
Do you believe your business diminishes the property values of any neighboring landowners?
No, I do not.
Do you believe that his business? I'm sorry, do you believe that your business diminishes the property values of any nearby landowners?
I do not.
Do you believe that the public would see some sort of gain if this petition was granted?
Oh, absolutely. There's multiple gains. You have jobs, you have sales tax dollars, you have property tax dollars. Immunity, support. Beneficial, you know, donations, things like that.
Do you believe that seventeen forty-nine winding road and the five and a half acre tract? That's part of seventeen sixty winding road. Do you believe that those subject properties are suitable for the requested use?
Yes, I do.
And are they currently being used for that use?
They're already in use for that use.
Do you believe that there are any negative environmental concerns associated with this development?
No, I do not.
Have you received any notification from any environmental groups, let's say like the Illinois EPA regarding this property?
Never.
Do you believe that this development or that your current use of the property negatively impacts the public health, safety, or general welfare?
No.
You have anything else that you'd like to add?
I think we've pretty much covered everything that at this time.
And what is it? Let me back up. I've got one more question. Are you asking these this zoning board of appeals to set one more hearing date? For you to present the site plan and stormwater management plan that will be prepared for you?
Well, actually, I had one one question for the board. In my discussions with Mr. Smith from Willett Hoffman. He wanted more direction. When it comes to the storm water management plan. He he wanted to know more specifically. What it is that the county is after. He said that um, you know, other than. Some of the ordinances there, he he said it's um. Not exactly cut and dried what he's supposed to do with that. There's a lot of different elements, especially since this is not theoretical that this is existing. So he he certainly wanted um. To know much more detail about that so that he could make sure that that he didn't guess on what he was supposed to be doing.
He'll he'll need to get ahold of Dave Anderson, our county engineer, and Dave will, he is also our stormwater management. And he'll be able to explain everything for him.
Okay.
Turn it over for any questions.
You you had a question before he.
I'm sorry?
Weren't you asking him a question before he wanted to ask?
So why I finished?
On another date?
Oh, yep. I'm sorry. Thank you. Are you asking the zoning board of appeals to set another hearing date on this petition so that you can supplement? All the materials for your petition?
I guess it it if it's necessary and that the you know, all of the information I provided is not a hundred percent adequate, then. We may have to go through another.
But you understand that you need to get a stormwater management plan put together, correct?
Well, that was, I'm not crystal clear on that, no, because I. That's what he was asking. And and I know that we thought we had to have a traffic study and then, of course, we didn't end up having to have that. So. I wasn't sure if the information that I provided was adequate or whether or not. We have to provide more information. So if if it's not adequate, then yes, I understand. We're gonna have to have a second meeting to be able to provide them more information.
And and you're willing to provide whatever the CBA advises you or recommends you to provide, is that correct?
Correct.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Please bear with me, cause I'm, you guys are behind me, so. Like to be facing you, but not quite correct right now. Um. I'm gonna try and go through some of the points and ask some questions either based off of the maps or. Um the items under the development plan. Um. A um under the, under the development plan um. Section two, a general belt and plan that covers all the land to be included in the PUD. With the total amount of development to occur. Referring to appendix or yeah, appendix A one, it's been with. Here with uh the total land to be included in the PUD is approximately ten point one six. Land is outlined, property will be accessed, current future parking. Depicted in B one. I guess I'm gonna kind of jump on the parking part of this first. There's areas indicated as truck loading and parking in B one, a little in A one as well. Um truck parking oh over for the um seventeen sixty. But it really. Nothing is. Very detailed in this layout. I don't know how many parking spots there are, what type of truck loading you're doing. Um and you've got truck and trailer storage, what type of storage are you? What are you looking at for the um truck and trailer storage? And that would be in B one. Uh same thing for A one on seventeen sixty, truck parking. Um is, what is, what is the numbers that are. Allocated toward those various spots and what manner of loading or unloading? Is gonna be done relative to that property?
Okay, are you on B one, did you say?
What?
Are you on on B one? Is that what you said?
A one and B one.
Okay, so in A one, north side seventeen sixty, where it says truck parking. Uh those are, I I apologize, I should have done a little better job labeling this. I can see why it might be a little confusing. That is the truck parking of the Z Best of of my trucks. Some of them might be related to steel manufacturing, others might not be. So that is uh truck parking or. My delivery trucks, gravel trucks, whatever the case may be. When you go to B one, towards the top middle, the parking, that's actually currently where employee parking is along that tree line. And when you turn ninety degrees from that, it says parking, which is just adjacent to the shop. That's actually customer parking there. So I apologize.
Do you know approximately either how many slots or spaces there are for each?
Yeah, so customer parking, there's probably close to a half a dozen employee parking there. There's probably close to ten, twelve. Spots there.
Okay, um. Reind- on B one, re-indicate to me where the customer and the and the employee parking is.
Towards the middle top of the page, there's uh. Two driveways and parking in between and right next to the greensapes.
Yep.
That is employee parking. There's approximately ten or twelve spots there.
Ten or twelve, okay.
Yeah. And then when you go down, if you if you scroll, yep, right there. In that parking, that is customer parking. There's five or six spots there for customer parking. And then if you go up and left. Where it says truck loading, unloading, that is where um FedEx trucks. Delivery trucks, the coil trucks, whatever are materials that come in, that that's where we unload the the supplies that come in. When you go to the bottom of the page and it says truck, trailer, yep, thank you, truck and trailer storage. That is our delivery trucks and trailer storage in the back lot. And then over to the right, where it says materials yard, that is obviously finished product materials. To be stored before they're loaded for customers.
Okay, so let's let's ask some more questions relative to that. The truck loading, those uh FedEx or well relatives comes in. You're just unloading. They're out in the middle of the parking, are out in the middle of the gravel area? They're not coming to the building or into the building?
Yeah, we don't have a loading dock or anything, so that's that's pretty mu- I mean, if it's FedEx or UPS, I mean, if they're small packages, yes, they unload them. And and carry them in my hand. If this is something that requires a forklift, they park in that area because it's out of the traffic flow. That that third driveway you can't see, but it's 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 actually not in usage right now. The one right up, note left. Left, 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 a stop, too far. That one. That one is is not actually usable. So that's a pretty level area and a good solid base for the forklift. So that that's where the trucks that require forklifts are unloaded.
Okay. So that uh what you just referred to, that access that's not being used anymore. Are you gonna take that back to green space or what are you doing with that?
Uh, no, we don't do that because it happens to line up directly with a door on that building. And if we ever have to take our main line out or coil shelves or anything, you you need that straight shot to be able to go out. So we would probably never take that back to green space. But it's just not really in existence as far as traffic flow now that there's two large driveways, one to the east and one to the west.
Okay, um then going down below, truck and trailer storage.
Yep.
Re- repeat what what was there? You talked about delivery and.
That that's our delivery trucks and trailers.
Okay, as opposed to your delivery trucks that are over in uh seventeen sixty?
Well, Dick, I'm not saying there wouldn't be some over there. We have a lot of trucks and trailers.
Okay, that well, and that addresses my, that addresses the subsequent question. How many?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head without counting, but a lot of them are farm trucks. This property is also. Been used for stuff for the farm. Some are parched trucks. I mean, I couldn't tell you without counting licenses and titles and. You know, primarily, we probably have. Five or six main delivery trucks and trailers for the steel product. Then we have trucks like dump trucks and bucket trucks and. Things of that nature for that Z Best owns.
Okay, um and actually, speaking of types of trucks, you said something about. Gravel trucks?
Yeah, dump truck.
Okay, what are you using those for? Those don't seem to be part of land, well, then maybe they were part of the landscaping.
Well, and not not to mention, you you gotta realize the amount of development that it took for this. I mean, we hauled in. Six hundred loads of fill in into this area here, and we have to haul in thousands of tons of gravel into here and. You know, you can't get anybody to haul, so we have our own trucks to do our own haul.
Okay, thank you. Um. Oh, again, going back relative to the parking um. In the mid- relatively in the middle of of B one is designated as seventeen forty-nine. I assume that's the residential property on this, on this site?
Well, the entire address is seventeen forty-nine, but yeah.
Well, I.
Where it mentioned seventeen forty-nine.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. That is, that is not, that's correct. That's not part of the.
That's reg- residential property?
That's correct.
Okay.
They own that and that's only been rented to employees.
Okay, and as far as the parking for that, I assume that's, maybe I shouldn't assume, but. Um is that in that indented area right in front of the house?
That's absolutely correct. Right there where she's at.
Alrighty, um. Moving on to item B, use of all areas of the site, including general size. Location and use of the business in all, in all buildings. Uh the current use of property is depicted in A one and B one. Um. Probably you meant A and B one and two. Um. But neither. Neither really indicates what the usage, I mean, other than um. A one and B two indicating. Um the building and the and equipment. Um there's not much indicated for the building, the manufacturing building. Um in either of those instances. First question is, what is the total square footage of that building right now?
Um technically, it's not one building, but are you mean?
That's that's kind of, it's it's connected. But I don't know, I have no idea how it's really connected and how much of that is you indicated. There's been add-ons, so.
Sure.
How much of it is. Connected, how much of it isn't, what's the total square footage that we're dealing with? And what is the use of those buildings? Um. For those various parts?
If I'm, if I can offer a suggestion, if you turn to appendix F, I think that might be easier for him to describe each building.
That's, yeah, that's fine. Um. That leaves out a few buildings, but I think those are otherwise described um in. In E and B, A one and B. So, okay, yeah, let's go to F.
So basically. Starting right to the left, thirty-six sixteen was one of the very original buildings. Um the office is in that building. Um material, finished product storage is in that building.
I would, I would like this described somewhere. Um. Um. Noted somewhere, maybe in the report, so we know where the businesses are located. Is that asking much?
Well, I mean, pretty much this entire facility of of of. Well, I mean, pretty much this entire facility of 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 appendix F is all related to either the business, the manufacturing, or the support of the manufacturing. Such as there's a small area for repair, the mechanic shop for for servicing the equipments. But but all of the, all of this entire structure you see in one way or another is either part of the manufacturing, the sales, or the support of the business.
Okay, I guess what I'm I'm asking is to get some breakdown of what is and isn't relative to manufacturing, or whether is or isn't relative to the landscaping, or you know, any other, and you've already indicated finished product storage and office in the thirty-six sixteen. So continue on with the rest of the building is in terms of what we're looking at and what you what you've got going on that property. And if it's easier for you, if that's something you wanna put off and do a and do a summary, um you know, kind of sit down and do a summary of that uh as D has requested, that's that's fine with me. That'll just be another one of those um supplementals that will address. Um, but I wanna have, I wanna have a real idea of where the flow is on this building, how this building's accessed, you know, how um what the usage of it is. Um. It's such a, it's such a hodgepodge that I'm, I can't get a good handle on what you're doing or how you're doing, so.
We can see if we can incorporate that into our site plan, and if if not, then we'll have him map it out.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Oh, okay, thank you. I I didn't wanna have to do.
According to the assessor's office, the total square footage of all those combined buildings is twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two square foot.
Twenty-three thousand.
Well, I don't. You guys are talking two different things, I believe.
I was gonna say, does that, does the assessors include um seventeen sixty as well?
No, but but I believe the assessor has the entire parcel as where we're zoomed in on the main structure. So there's other buildings that are not in this picture.
Well, and that's and that's the other point, that's the other point I was going to address, is there are other buildings that aren't in this, that would be appropriate to know specifically what they're for and
And I believe the
sizes are.
I believe the house is part of that twenty-three thousand as well.
Okay. Yep. There's these dump. Yeah, no, I I know, that's, I know they're missing out of there. That's why, that's why I didn't originally go to F right away, but that's, but that's the point. Is that there's stuff, there's stuff missing, not adequately described in usage.
I I don't have, I don't have the house. This is just these buildings that I have a report on from the assessment office. And that that was the twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two square footage of those nineteen buildings that they assessed.
Okay, well, in that case, we need to probably get some clarification on that because based on the numbers Bruce has and that twenty-three thousand, we've got uh we've got about twenty-five hundred square feet difference. Um. Okay, let's move on from there. Patient ball previous services. Okay, I think we've already addressed that when we're talking about the location and proposed development of all open spaces where creation, parking, stall arrangements. Shows appendix B, which shows material yard. Okay. Back to that, excuse me, while I juggle back. We've got the parking areas, stall arrangement, obviously, this problem does not appear because it's on gravel. It's not specifically delineated. It's a space available, and as you indicated, the one area is ten to twelve uh spots, the other one five to six. That materials lay down, or that materials yard, um earlier in your testimony, you indicated that that was for finished goods?
Some finished goods, so that would be like, the sheeting is too large to store indoors, so that's stored in the exterior materials yard. The accessories and the trims, depending on the amount of them, tend to be stored indoors. In the in the thirty-six sixteen building, which is, as I said, the finished product.
Yeah. And so that materials yard is some finished, too big to fit into the enclosed property?
Pretty much any any sheets, any of the sheeting products are stored out there because of the size.
Okay, and you don't need to build any additional storage, whether it's covered or for that, they could just sit out in the weather? That those materials could just sit out in the weather?
Um, yeah, that's that's pretty much accurate. There may be, if you look at what she brought up on B one, there's a um in the in the middle bottom, right above the trailer, you can see there's a brown building right there. Um, so depending on, there's concrete to the right of that. Um, we may end up putting some kind of uh racking system, which is in in essence is a rack with a roof structure on it. We also contemplated uh, you know, putting some of the materials under there, but for the most part, the materials yard to the right, there there wouldn't be any structures or anything, that's all outdoor materials.
Okay, now you're saying there may be some racking put in for storage as well over in what you've said is concrete area to the right of that building?
Possibly to the, you gotta go a little to the right.
Yeah, it's the, it's the area that's kind of a beige or a white color.
Yeah, possibly something in there. There there's a cribbing rack in there currently for the dunage. Um, so yeah, we it it can be evolving as far as s- storage goes, but for but the materials yard that you are asking about, that is for outdoor sheeting that can be stored out outside.
Okay, and you need that largest space for that area or for that those materials?
Well, it looks large, but it it's it's not, when you when you gotta deal with uh lanes and a lot of, some of these sheets we make are forty, fifty feet long, so it it takes up a lot of area.
Okay, that's, okay, that's fine. Um. I would suggest, however, if you're looking at putting in some racking systems or some additional storage, you include that in some of the updating of your plan?
Well, currently, there is nothing on the books to do that, but you asked, I believe you, your question was directed in the future. And that was something that's been just, has been discussed, but currently, there's no plans to do that.
Okay, but that becomes an additional issue that we should be addressing on the front side right now, because we're talking about a planned development, so we're not talking about just the existing. But any future needs that you would have. So I would believe that that probably would be appropriate to go into your plan development. Um, the other thing is that red, that red bill or kind of a reddish roof to that. What is, what's that for? What's um, what's the size of it? What?
So that um, you asked about building. That is actually a uh our heating system. It's an outdoor wood burning boiler, very large in in size.
Okay.
And it's not really a a building. It's literally a two by two by four concrete blocks that are just stacked, and then there's a floating roof structure on top of it. So we may have to do something with that because some of these fifty and seventy mile an hour winds have kind of uh taken a toll on it, and also we don't have as much indoor firewood storage as we need. So that is something that potentially down the road may have to be addressed. And there's a possibility we're gonna rip the entire thing out and and go to propane as as well, because we can't seem to keep up with firewood.
Okay. And then you've got uh that white area next to it that says building, what is that referring to?
Okay, so this is kind of an older satellite photo, and there was multiple buildings. All those white structures you see, those are all gone. Um, to to the left, going left, but to the left, there you go. So that if you go up a little, the those structures, that was, that was kind of four buildings, little like uh I don't know what you wanna call them, four little buildings stacked together. But that's all gone. All of those trees are gone, and then the outline there represents a shipping container structure, which is basically four shipping containers stacked uh end to end, and then there's a roof over the top of them. The assessor's office has already been out and measured them and um actually clear back in January of twenty twenty, Wendy and I had corresponded about. We had, I think, we took out ten or fifteen buildings out of here and replaced them with shipping containers.
Okay, and that effectively becomes the shipping. So that that shipping container building is re- references the usage of the shipping container with the roof. The shipping containers with the roof over the top.
That, that's correct.
Okay, um would be appropriate to have the square footage on that as well, and you said they're stacked, so you've got, you've got them too high?
No, uh, end to end.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So it's like eighty going east and west, and then there's, I think, approximately twenty or twenty-one foot in between them.
Okay, okay.
I reached out to Jared this morning with an email. I I just realized that he had labeled it storage containers, and and I don't have any building permits on those, so I was I was asking him for the square footage so I can figure out how much um and what kind of building.
That would, that would be appropriate as well. Okay, um. Let's see. You've indicated, oh, let's talk, we've already talked about the outdoor storage. Um, location of existing site improvements, um. Let's D one and D two. Got the location of existing and proposed site improvements, including drains, culverts, retaining wall and fences. Um, you indicate a couple in uh D one, you should indicate a retaining wall between your property and the adjacent property, and then in D two, um you've got a retaining wall there um along by seventeen sixty. Um, what's the, what's the structure of each of those retaining walls?
They're both identical. They're made out of precast two by two by four concrete blocks.
Okay, and those are there, um what's the specifics of those retaining walls? What's, I mean, is there a substantial drop in the properties?
No, so on seventeen sixty, uh, most of it is one and a half block high, you know, anywhere from one to two blocks high. And the same thing on seventeen forty-nine, but it's a little more consistent where it's more like two blocks high with partially buried. So you your elevation differences, you know, in the neighborhood of three feet.
Okay, and the purpose of those is to remove, uh to avoid runoff into adjacent properties, into the adjacent properties?
That's correct. The main reason for seventeen forty-nine was to uh stop the erosion and allow the catch basins to catch all of the water.
Okay, and on seventeen sixty? Same, uh just, just to stop the runoff from the gravel into the into the uh field?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
On seventeen sixty, the retaining wall there is just to stop the, any erosion or runoff from the gravelled area to keep it out of the field.
Yeah, that's that's correct.
Okay, um and speaking of the catch basins and the um tile lines on D one.
Yes.
Um, do you have an easement on those?
There's not a legal easement, but I do have permission from Circle F, does this improve the erosion problem that they were having?
Okay, um. Might be appropriate to have a
And Circle F, of course, is is our family corporation, whereas my mother represents twenty-two percent.
Right, and I and I understand there's, you know, a family tie there. I'm just thinking that at some point, whether the industrial or the commercial land sells, or whether the farm sells, might be appropriate to have a formal easement. Um, but I suppose that's, that's up to you if it's, if it's working right now. Um, let's see. On you've got uh G. You have, other than the existing green space, uh trees, visual buffer between you and the um seventeen fifty-five, there's no plan for any additional green space or landscape buffers?
That's correct at this time.
Okay, at this time, clarify.
That's correct. There's no additional plans to add more green space.
Okay.
You don't have any plans in the future to add greensapes yet either, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, H, description of sewage disposal um and location of such facilities refers to C one. Um. What's the what's the capacity of that septic field and you, now let me back up, you indicated that you and um somebody from county health had looked at that about ten years ago.
That's correct, that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's correct. Jennifer had been out, I believe it was in two thousand and ten, and I'm not sure if that's when the house was added, or not even sure exactly how how we started this, but um they had me uncover the tank, we pumped it. She said the tank was was adequate size and construction was proper in order to have the house plus the bathrooms and the sink of the business. And but she required me to add on two hundred additional feet onto the field, which we did. They came out and approved, uh inspected and improved it.
Okay, so then I'm assuming that that field is, or that septic, yeah, that septic field is for both the house and the commercial property?
That's correct.
Um, and how much have you expanded in that last eleven going on twelve years?
In relation to toilets and sinks, not at all.
Um, how about in terms of number of people on site and employed?
Um. I would say it's either the same or possibly less.
Okay, um. And that's part of that's part of what still needs to be done. Am I correct in terms of evaluating um the septic and the drainage and that?
Yeah, correct. Jennifer and I are still discussing. I think she has to get some clarification on some things. Yeah, correct. Jennifer and I are still discussing. I think she has to get some clarification on some things is how I remember leaving it with her.
Okay, and just you haven't alluded to this, but just because of the proximity, is the property at seventeen fifty-five, you utilizing that septic field as well?
No, that's incorrect. They have their own private.
I didn't, it wasn't, it was, I just clarified.
Oh, okay. No, that, they have their own septic system. Now, we are on a shared well agreement, but we do not share the septic system.
Okay, well, thank you for that transition because um, I was gonna ask about the well and its location, but you said you had a shared well?
The well's mine and we, I have a, uh, an agreement to share it with seventeen fifty-five.
Excuse me, one question. How many bathrooms do you have for your, how many bathrooms do you have in your buildings altogether?
Well, there's one in the house, or the house as well. There's one in the house and there's two in the um shop.
And you haven't, um, as long as he's gone in that direction, and you haven't increased the the business hasn't had an increase in demand for water usage with any of your equipment or the manufacturing that you're doing?
No, nothing that we do uses water or um no.
Okay, then relative to that private well, that's appears to be a rather interesting location. How did it end up there?
Well, the well was there before anything was there. So there was a house, a hundred and some year old house that the fire department burnt, and then there was a couple, uh, two to three old buildings that were there that we systematically started tearing down and when I bought the property. And the well was one of the few salvageable things on the property. So the initial building the topography also of the land kind of dictated where the buildings would be put. We certainly didn't have the equipment, the resources or the money back then to do much, so you kind of put it where you put it. And then the reason it's underneath that, the, uh, right between the two buildings, there is a separation between the buildings. It's a little hard to tell by the picture.
No, I can, I can tell. It's kind of, that's why, it's kind of tucked there in a
Yeah, yeah, it's actually kind of under a, a, a little bit of an overhang, but basically the reason is because it was there from day one.
Okay, now let's get to that shared well agreement. Where do the lines from your private well go to get to seventeen fifty-five?
Uh, well, if you look at the uh illustration, C one she has up there, it would go from the original building. Yep, it, it goes basically on the west side of that, so go left a little bit, where, where up, where that roof color changed. So it goes up, keep going up, stop, and then go straight right. Yep, and then it goes over, um, if you look very closely, you can see there's a little uh valve and meter pit right in the corner there, um, go up a little bit, right, left, right there. There's a meter pit right there, and then from there it goes into the basement of the house.
Right. No, that's heck of a long line for a private well.
Well, the well, that was actually already there because that used to be a pasture. So there was a hydrant right there originally.
Okay. Alrighty, um.
Are there any sinks or toilets in the building at seventeen sixty?
No, there's no water, there's no electric, there's no power, uh, just like and there's no plans to put water over there.
Okay, um. Location and size of all existing and proposed signs, uh, no present plans to install a four by eight sign as depicted in C. I don't know quite how it goes out in a rural situation, but have you gotten the permits or the do you have have you already addressed the limitations or the setbacks or whatever on the size of that sign?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't believe there is any, but well, certainly before we would put it up, we would confirm that there's not a size limitation or a setback or an orientation problem.
We'll need a permit for that sign. For any sign that's put up, you need to ask if you need a permit for it.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm I'm used to being, you know, putting the signs in the city and close to city, and there's requirements on those, size limitations, lighting restrictions, those types of things. And I just I didn't know if you had addressed that on that sign.
No.
Um, cause four by eight isn't an exceptionally large sign, but it's not small either. Okay, um, and, oh, on that sign, how how high is that gonna be? What type, what type of support is that gonna have?
Um, more than like, there's a, you can't see it. There's an elevated landscape planter right there, which is probably up a foot and a half. And we'll probably put four by four posts in the ground, something like that.
Okay.
So it, it would be at, you know, driving eye level, not gonna be ten, twelve feet air or anything like that.
Okay. And it won't impair the um line of sight coming out of that, out of your drive there?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay. Um, location and design of street, street and parking lighting. You indicate that there's no street or parking lighting on the property or anticipated to be on the property?
That's correct. The only lighting now is any exterior building lighting. There isn't any in the parking or in the driveway.
But there is exterior building lighting?
Correct.
Okay, and what, how's, how's that lighting, how's that lighting placed or or what's, what's its usage? Is it security lighting? Is it just general lighting? What do, what do you?
That does till dawn vapor, vapor lighting.
What?
Dusk till dawn vapor lighting.
Okay. And where, where is that located at?
Uh, primarily at, at main entrances. Uh, there, there's a almost every side of the building with the exception of the north. We, we haven't installed any on the north side yet.
Oh, nothing on the north side, nothing on the street side, so it's east, west and south of the, on the building?
Correct. There is plans to add a light on the north side, but haven't done it yet.
Okay.
Well, according to the Lee County Code, lighting is required for any vehicle, vehicle parking, loading or circulation and used um for such a purpose after sunset, um, what are the hours of the business?
Uh, fi- five o'clock is.
So will there be any activity after sunset at, at either one of the sites?
No, we, we wouldn't.
After five o'clock?
I was gonna say after five o'clock, there, there shouldn't be activity on a normal routine. But you, you, you touched on the, on the loading zone there for a minute. That, that's part of the reason we would like to add one on the north side of that building. If you go back to you go back to B one for a minute, where we talked about the truck loading zone.
Yeah.
And I, and I discussed that driveway number three is, is currently not being used. So the, part of the reason we want to put the lighting in was so that if there was a circumstance where something would have to be unloaded, you know, after the normal business hours, we'd have proper lighting. But the, the reason that we have that designated for truck loading right there is after COVID hit, um, we were very concerned with different drivers coming in and out of all kinds of doors and areas, and we wanted to, to kind of address that. So we want to have a designated loading zone um, away from the buildings and on level ground and certainly uh protect the employees as, as well. So that's the reason that we set up that designated area right there, and that's why we will probably add lighting directly across from that.
Okay, and one of the reasons I asked, number one, I was surprised that there was no lighting at all on that property, but obviously there is some lighting. And that relative to the code, you are specifically to, to address exterior lighting, which I would assume includes exterior building lighting, so um, that, your information needs to be updated relative to that. And speaking of which, and I forgot to ask this earlier about when we were talking about the uh the sections of the building that were being used and what, what particular areas. Um, where are the access points on this, on this building? What, uh?
Which, which building do you want to start with?
Right now, I'm just considering that whole glob as, I'm using it generically as a building. You break it down for me.
So, uh, just put your cursor somewhere and we'll, we'll work counterclockwise, so. Okay, so that's, that's the front building. Um, there's currently one garage door on that which faces to the east, and that is also a walk door entrance.
Like this mapped out in the site plan?
Um, wouldn't hurt if it's easier to do that as, as part of that site plan than walking around the building right now, so. It'd be nice to know where the ingress and egress to the building is, how much there is of it.
So we can take basically photos north, south, east, west, and, and descriptions of, of what those entrances, or excuse me, the, the doors before?
Yeah, that would, if that works for you, that's, that's fine with me.
Alright.
Um, indicate no noise or odor pollution, uh, relative to the noise, you're um you're dealing with large sheets of metal. You're doing, if I'm not mistaken, um, a fair amount of bending on that. What type of, what's, what's the noise being emitted from that?
Machinery?
Yeah.
Uh, if you're outside, you practically cannot hear unless for some reason the doors are open. You can't hear the manufacturing equipment. The only thing that you would really, I guess, consider potentially noise pollution is, is the equipment moving the materials from the conveyor to the materials yard. So you don't, you don't hear um virtually anything outside of the building.
Okay.
Do, do your voice?
No, there's nothing above, uh, now, some of them choose to, and I encourage that if they want, but there's nothing that operates above an unsafe decibel.
Does, does your lawn care and landscape business involve removing shrubs and trees?
Uh, we pretty much aren't doing as much of that anymore, but um I'm not saying there might not be an occasion for that.
I was just thinking like a wood chipper.
Oh, well, I, I, I thought we were talking about the manufacturing, so I didn't.
No, I, yeah, well, that's, that's where I started out was relative to that. I was more um, I was looking at the operation and that was the first thing I thought of that might address the noise, and I appreciate the fact that it can't be heard out of the building. Is there any other function of the multiple operations that you're doing there that might that might be loud enough to require earplugs or um headphones or head covering, uh, ear coverings?
Uh, in, in relation to the manufacturing?
In relation to any of the operations that you're doing?
Well, certainly, like, like she mentioned, if, if they're doing tree cutting or something like that, um, we have, uh I think of something else that might be noisy.
Would that be on your property or just out where you're working, on the landscaping part of it?
No, that, that would be on, on customer.
Yeah, okay. Then relative to this, I'm not, I'm not worried about that part. Okay, um. Rating, grading of site, we've already talked about that's yet to, that information is yet to be clarified at final. Um, same.
The noise and odor pollution, I'm sorry, Glenn, um, with the landscaping business, where is your waste disposed of? Brush and lawn clipping, I, I don't know what to do with the lawn.
Yeah, like I said, we don't do too much of that anymore. If we happen to be in Woodhaven, they have their own site. Um, the city of Ambay has their own site. A lot of the stuff we do is forest management plans, so you don't actually remove the, it just left.
So you don't bring any compost back to these two sites at all?
No compost, nope.
Okay, um. And the proposed drainage and utility, that's still to be addressed. Uh, sewage, that's still to be addressed. Uh, we talked about the water supply. LP tanks. Indicate you have multiple LP tanks on the property. Where are those situated at?
Uh, there's one on the north side of the gray roof building.
Okay.
There's a new one, uh, next to would be the uh southwest corner of the container building. Yep, down there.
Okay.
And then there's one, um, you go up to customer parking. Go up a little bit. Right about in there, we've uh isolated our, our fueling station, including we have our own LP refilling station for forklifts and, and things like that. So there's another one located right there.
Okay, when you said refueling station, is that strictly LP?
No, there's gasoline and diesel. All three tanks are in a nice line and, and out of the thorough, main thoroughfare of the driveway.
Okay. And the fire department didn't have any?
Nope, no concerns with that. In fact, they actually parked, I think, right next to that.
And no, uh, is there is there a concrete retaining area underneath that, or is
No.
Case of spillage?
No.
Okay.
They're brand new tanks supplied by FS, ground, ground levels.
Okay.
They have a, they sit on concrete footing, but there's not a, uh, a retention.
Including the gas and diesel?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, um. Traffic, we addressed engineering. You indicated that there was no environmental issues. Um, and yet in the ECO CAT and part of the um the Soil and Water Conservation District report, um it does indicate certain species that may be in the area, and I, and I know that's a maybe, it's not necessarily um guaranteed, but it says petitioner will need to contact the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for further clarifications and listing of resources for this site. You indicated you had not contacted the Illinois Department of Natural Resources?
No, I'm not even sure what you're referring to.
Um, I'm taking this out of the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District report um, and land use opinion, which also goes into the uh ECO CAT study ecological compliance assessment and make some references, but um specifically at the end of that paragraph, it says petitioner will need to contact the Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
That's something I think we can accomplish between the next hearing date, if that's agreeable.
Yes, I, I wanted to get a clarification because I was pretty sure he'd said that he had not had any contact. And I knew that had been a recommendation under the report. Bear with me a moment. At this time, that's the end of my question. Oh, I wanted to get back to the I remember this, I needed to get back to the parking. Minimum parking required for the proposed petition will be at least one space for each two employees. And what, what was your average number of employee, or what was, what's your maximum number of employees?
Uh, at, for this location?
Yes.
So there, the ten to twelve spaces that I told you there that are marked
Yeah.
Certainly represent more than uh twenty employees. Wouldn't have twenty employees at that.
Okay, okay. Um, one space for each vehicle used in the business, and you've got a variety of different locations for And you've got a variety of different locations for business vehicles. Um and based on the spacing, I'm assuming that's adequate. One space per thousand square feet of gross. Um floor area for guest parking, um what is your normal? What's your normal traffic, customer, guest, traffic?
Uh most stuff is done internet, phone, there's uh as far as the, the customer parking to come in the office. It would be pretty rare to have more than three cars there at the exact same time.
Okay.
That's why we allowed four to five spaces.
Okay. But relative to the code, we probably will need to address that differential. Because if you need one for every thousand square foot of, of gross floor space. I think we probably, you probably don't need twenty or twenty, twenty-three parking spots for guests.
Well, yeah, and this is, this is not retail, like.
No, and I, I understand, I'm just. We, we probably in, in our conditions or our recommendations, we probably need to. Need to address that. Okay, um. That is the extent of my questions.
In, in your plan, you described that there will be future parking. Can you explain where you were saying, you were thinking? And A, say current and future parking for the property is depicted, and I, I didn't know where the future parking. In the plan you were describing.
I, I'm not entirely sure where.
Under A, the last sentence.
I think he was just referring to that current and future, based on his description, is what's in B one. I don't think he was separating it, I think that was just inclusive of, at least that's what I understood.
There's also obviously a tremendous amount of space on the uh five and a half acres of the north side of the street if we have to create. Or parking.
But if you were gonna do that, I think.
Not, it's not in the plan.
That's what I was gonna. Yeah, at this time, there's no intent to do that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And at this time, you don't see any need in the near future for additional parking?
That is correct.
Okay.
No.
How often does your company pick up the metals, your used metals? How often does uh your, the metal recycling company pick up?
It's on a wheel call, so there's not a set schedule, and certainly busier we are, the more scrap we produce.
How do you handle that material at a big dumpster?
That's right, there's a uh, like a twenty or thirty yard recycling dumpster from Buckman Metal and Iron that's there.
Oh boy, like that, like that.
Dee, any more questions?
Uh not at this time.
We have buddy on the board who would like to ask a question. What's that?
I said, is there anybody up on the Zoom, Zoom that would like to ask a question? Please raise your hand. Don't see anybody.
If I can make a quick request as well, there are some items as we went through tonight that need to be accomplished, so I don't know if we could set it. On your next regularly scheduled hearing date, just to give us enough time. I do know Willa Hoffman. Just with real estate and everything else going on right now, they're backed up, so I just wanna, if we go to set the next date, I just wanna allow as much time as possible to get that done.
Well, our next official meeting is, I believe, February third.
And we have a petition that night already set.
We've just got the one, based on the fact. That tonight's taken an hour and a half so far, but we should be, we should be able to.
Once, once we get the information, they bring it.
And it would be my goal as well to get that, like the site plan, for instance, to you well in advance of that date, so you have time to review it.
Appreciate that.
Hey, would you like to make a motion to recess as you wanted to do?
Yes.
Our next official.
I'd make a motion that the zoning board continues this hearing until Thursday, February third, so the.
Before you guys continue and recess, um it's not really clear whether you're requiring him to. Further comply with stormwater management plan, have one done, that's kind of been left open-ended, um. So are you guys going to require that you have an engineer review?
Absolutely, I mean, that's what I thought was, that's what I understood was being done, that's part of the, that's part of the request, well. He le, he left it as. Not sure about the specifics, but as I understood, Dee did say that he could contact the county and. Um Dave, um whatever. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not shortening up or reducing the requirements that, that are in play.
And are you guys satisfied with everything that was provided? Are you expecting more as a board? I just want it very clear what we're asking.
I think as we've gone through, we've talked about the additional items we've been asking for.
Additional items being number one, the Will Hoffman. Uh survey for the flood and the water.
And if they're.
The site plan, the clarification of some of the documentation and the locations and the.
ECOCAT.
Um with that, plus the additional um IDNR um contact. So all those things that we had gone through during the course of the questions and the testimony.
If I, if I could get with Courtney and we'll kind of summarize what happened tonight and what the needs will be.
The, the one thing I will add about the stormwater management plan, if I remember your testimony correctly, it's that you already have a stormwater management system in place, so. Would it be possible to have the engineer review that system and determine whether or not it meets the ordinance, the county ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what we'll do then.
But that, that would be relative to both properties.
Correct.
For, yeah, both sides of the road.
Yes, yes.
So. Read your motion one more time. And we didn't get through it, so I'll just start over. My recommendation that the zoning board continue this hearing until Thursday. February third, so that um we would have a chance to review all the remaining final reports.
Is there a second? In seconds, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Six o'clock meeting, the next order of business. Motion. See, we don't have the motion. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
No? No, no.
Continuing this meeting.
We're continuing.
Yeah, you don't need.
Continue it, you cannot adjourn.
So we're continuing, but we're recessing as of tonight.